Different leadership.
Yeah.
Younger person.
Think you would like.
First time I found out about.
Meeting to order, it is seven o'clock. And the purpose of this meeting tonight is to hear a presentation on the budget before we recognize the county manager, we would all stand and for the invocation and the pledge. Most gracious and loving God, we give you thanks again for this day and our many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this county. We thank you for our military and our veterans, and we thank you, Lord, for this weekend that we celebrated those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. Now, Lord, as we prepare to labor over this budget, we ask that you would guide us, give us understanding and wisdom and courage to do those things that are right for our citizens in this county. In all these things, we pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cannon.
I don't think he's speaking to me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm pleased this evening to present for your review and consideration the fiscal year 2016 recommended budget. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that this presentation is rather lengthy, but I feel as the county manager, I have a responsibility to the board and to the citizens of Cumberland County to provide a detailed overview of the recommended budget. In addition, at the end of this budget presentation, I have a new initiative that I'm extremely excited about sharing with you this evening. This new initiative will define a path for streamlining the organization and for becoming more efficient. So with that, we'll start with details of the recommended budget. The recommended total county-wide budget is $526 million. The general fund totals $319 million, which represents an increase of $4.5 million or 1.4 percent increase from the prior fiscal year. The tax rate to support this budget remains the same at 74 cents per hundred, and one penny on the tax rate is projected to bring in $2.2 million of revenue. First of all, I'd like to review some of our current year revenue projections. Currently, our projections indicate that real and personal property collections will bring in $1.7 million over this year's budget, which will achieve a collection percentage of just over 99 percent. This will be the seventh year in a row that our tax office has achieved a collection rate above 99 percent, and I'd like to applaud them for their continued collection efforts. Motor vehicles this year are estimated to bring in $1.4 million above the budget from the tax and tag together initiative. Fortunately, our sales tax collections have rebounded this year. As you may recall, last year, our retail sales were significantly weakened by the federal budget sequestration and the federal government shutdown. We project that tax collections will be $1.4 million over the budget, which will represent a 4 percent increase. Cumberland County, the state, and our nation has faced unprecedented economic challenges. Increased demand for services and increased operational costs outweigh our available revenue. We're still faced with uncertainties today, our local revenue streams, General Assembly actions, military and troop strength, and federal spending. The recommended budget this evening has been developed around supporting the strategic goals and objectives, maintaining core services, and honoring our fiscal policies. Although this budget really has a one-year funding focus, I would ask that we view it from a much broader perspective and realize that any decisions that we make this year will have an effect on future budgets. The guiding principle in developing this budget is financial sustainability, and you'll hear that term throughout the presentation. The challenge has been to balance financial sustainability and being able to respond to increased service demand and our goal of providing excellent customer service. We have identified four key funding priorities to allocate our resources, and they are investment in our workforce, customer service, infrastructure, repairs and maintenance, and technology, each of these which are aligned with the strategic plan. First, I'd like to share some of our revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year. As you know, the ad valorem taxes are a major source of revenue in the general fund. They make up approximately 54 percent of the total revenue. This year, we've projected natural growth of 2 percent, which equates to $3.2 million for a total ad valorem budget of $167.8 million. Motor vehicles for next year are budgeted at $15.7 million. This projects an increase of $1.5 million over the current year or the adopted budget from FY '15. Sales taxes make up about 12 percent of the total revenue in the general fund. This year, we're projecting an increase of $2.2 million above last year's adopted budget, with total sales tax being projected at $39 million. Fund balance. We have budgeted or appropriated fund balance in the amount of $7.9 million, which is within the fund balance policy parameters previously adopted by the board, and this is almost exactly the same amount of fund balance that was appropriated last year. At this time, I'd like to shift our focus to expenditure highlights in the recommended budget. The department submitted budget requests that exceeded the base budget by $21.4 million. The supplemental request included request for 113 new positions, 41 vehicles at a cost of $1.2 million, $641,000 in capital outlay, and $821,000 for general maintenance and Although we have seen some revenue growth over the prior fiscal year, it's still limited and certainly not enough to cover the supplemental request. Our focus this year has been to allocate funding in support of the strategic plan, continue our mission of providing quality services while being fiscally responsible. We tried to address some increased service demands, and most of all, to allocate funding to the extent that it was considered financially sustainable in the coming fiscal years. This chart summarizes the four funding priorities and the dollar amounts that are allocated to each funding priority, and also the source of revenue applied to each funding priority. Our first priority is our workforce. This supports our goal of retaining motivated, professional, well-trained personnel who offer excellent customer service with pride. As you know, our employees are the county's greatest resource. Funding has been provided for a 3 percent cost of living increase. This accomplishes a top priority established by the Board of Commissioners earlier this year. It's been three years since the board included a cost of living increase, and three years ago, it was a 2 percent cost of living. Continued emphasis on wellness strategies further demonstrate our commitment to our employees. Wellness programs are a strategic investment in that it improves the well-being of our workforce. Our focus has been to develop programs that create positive lifestyle changes. This year, we have been able to develop an employee garden. We've developed walking and running clubs countywide. We're in the process of developing team sports, and I have engaged the city manager about the city's interest in joining team sports for a little healthy competition. Also, we are developing and continuing to develop a full array of classes on nutrition and stress management and those type of things. Here's the bottom line about wellness programs. The welfare of our employees has a direct impact on the county's success, and my goal is that the county employees will be a model or a catalyst for change, positive lifestyle change for the community. Our second priority is customer service, and we are a service organization. We should never lose sight that customer service is at the heart of what we do and who we are. Customer service supports our core value of serving our citizens with professionalism, respect, integrity, diversity, and excellent customer service. The first item under customer service is a recommendation for $100,000 for a homeless initiative. This is another top priority that was established by the Board of Commissioners. Also, it was an initiative identified by the City Council. We plan to partner with the city and address this appropriately as a community issue. We began the coordinated effort by having a joint meeting on May 14th. The discussion from that meeting revealed the need to establish a position to coordinate resources already available in the community and match those resources with the needs of the homeless. For the long term, we need to develop a coordinated case management system and potentially establish an intake center. Ultimately, our goal in cooperation with the city of Fayetteville should be to develop a systematic approach reaching this underserved population. The second category under customer service includes a recommendation for 13 out of the 113 requested positions. These 13 positions total $569,000. These positions are in response to increased demand for services that cannot be managed without additional personnel. In the emergency services department, the director two years ago embarked on a review to address a state and federal mandate, and that mandate was that 90 percent of all calls were to be answered within 10 seconds. In 2013, our response was 69.4 percent of all calls were answered within 10 seconds. The department director engaged employees through confidential employee surveys and developed focus groups. Based on that feedback and information, several changes were put in place, and I'm pleased to tell you this evening that over a two-year period, our call standard has improved from 69.4 percent to 88 percent of calls being answered within 10 seconds. We have not been able to reach that 90 percent mandate. I recommend four positions to work toward achieving the 90 percent call standard on a consistent basis. In the area of child support, several years ago, the Board of Commissioners approved some new positions in the paternity establishment unit, and you also approved funding to pay for paternity testing. Both of these actions has increased our paternity establishment by over 8 percent. While we've made improvement in the area of paternity establishment, our collection percentage has remained the same. We've called in our state representative in the child support division to do a review of our collections division and to give us some recommendations. Her recommendation, based on her detailed review, revealed that an increase in the collection percentage could only be achieved with additional personnel. Based on that recommendation, we are recommending three new positions in the collections division of child support. There's one important thought I want to leave you with regarding child support. Enhanced collections increase the income for our families, and that funding is reinvested into our local economy to hopefully reduce dependency on other social programs. In the sheriff's office, we're recommending four detective positions based upon caseload data and caseload increases in areas such as human trafficking, property and financial crimes, and youth services. And finally, the health department requested nine positions, and we're recommending two. The first one being a medical lab technologist position. This is in response to the increase in the number of tests, and most of that volume is attributable to our sexually transmitted disease clinic. You may recall that a few years ago, we added resources in that clinic due to a state review and our state ranking. Additional providers and extended hours has created the additional volume in testing. And finally, the environmental health section requested a food inspector. There's been an increase in the number of food establishments and also temporary food events and festivals and things like that. In order to keep up with the state mandated intervals, quarterly, semi-annual, or annual testing and review, we're recommending one new food inspector in the area of environmental Our next priority is that of repairs and maintenance, and this supports the strategic goal of ensuring that our facilities are well-maintained. You may recall that last year, we set a goal of proactively funding and maintaining our facilities. We had a professional evaluation done on three areas. They were parking lots, roof replacement, and building exterior. This chart in front of you will give you the different evaluations and the multi-year cost. For the parking lot resurfacing, that totals 2.2 million; the roof repair, 4.9; the building exterior, 2.5; for a total general fund multi-year funding plan of 9.7 million. I do want to draw your attention to the fiscal year 2016 recommended funding level, and that is 3.6 million. I'd like to give you some perspective on how we ended up where we are today with this significant plan. During the years of 2000 to 2014, we had a major building emphasis on building replacement and building renovation projects. Those nine building projects over that 14-year period increased the annual debt service 7.6 million and also increased our annual operating cost related to the new operations or new buildings, $7.8 million. Based on the significant resources needed for the first year and really to put ourselves in a place of catching up and proactively funding our repairs and maintenance, I'm recommending an installment financing to fund the first three years of this plan. The projected debt service payment for the first year is included in the recommended budget. It's not the ideal situation, but it's really the only option that we have to get a good start on these projects and the amount that it's going to take to fund these paving and roofing and building exterior projects. Based on these significant funds, I believe our focus needs to be on accomplishing this list and that we should delay any new building or renovation projects at this time. The budget also includes $1.1 million for other projects, and I'll just mention a few that are significant in scope and amount. We're replacing the detention center boilers, boilers and chillers throughout various county facilities. The budget also includes funding to replace the detention center and courthouse camera security system, and we're including $180,000 to clean building exterior, the county courthouse, the law enforcement center, and the new public health facility. The final funding priority is technology, and this addresses our strategic objective of advancing the county's automation plan, optimizing service delivery through technology, enhancing current services, and creating new service opportunities. Included in this category under technology is $271,000 to upgrade our computer network, software for veteran services and our GIS department, $480,000 for our final phase of our telephone conversion to the voice over Internet protocol, and $89,000 to replace computers in the health department and the library. I'd like to take just a few moments to give you an update on some of our technology projects. In the area of document and imaging, this has been a collaborative effort between county information services, the Department of Social Services, and child support. The initial phase will be fully implemented in December. Additional funds have been added in this recommended budget to add veteran services in this first initial phase. In addition, county information services has led a strategic process to replace the financial, HR, and benefit software. This project had a kickoff on May 14th. Finance department will be the first department that's in the conversion, with departments phased in after that. There's significant benefits that we can gain from the document imaging system as well as the financial and HR software, green efficiencies, a reduction of the use of paper and our dependency upon a paper flow, creating operational efficiencies through automated workflows, and reducing duplication of entries, multiple entries of the same document. All of this really translates back to customer service. Finally, I'd like to introduce a new division created in our county information services department. Our new information services director, Mr. Keith Todd, created this new division this budget year by realigning existing budgeted positions. Let me tell you what this division is responsible for. They'll be documenting and reviewing and analyzing all the business processes that are encompassed in the document imaging software and the financial and HR software. The mission is to ensure that our business processes are aligned and structured to appropriately achieve the efficiencies that are inherent in these software programs. I'd like to mention some other expenditure highlights. In the area of education, the recommended budget includes an appropriation of $77.8 million for the Board of Education. This represents an increase of $911,000. This increase is based on the formula that was approved in the school funding agreement last year. For Fayetteville Technical Community College, the recommended budget includes an appropriation of $10.1 million. This represents an increase of $456,000. In the area of vehicles, for the sheriff's office, we're recommending 20 replacement vehicles, four new vehicles that go with the new positions, an additional van in the detention center for transportation. In addition, three hybrid vehicles are recommended, two for tax administration and one for the Department of Social Services. In addition, two replacement trucks are recommended, one in landscaping and one in animal control. I do want to talk for just a few moments about a request that we received from the Department of Social Services. They requested 65 new positions at an approximate county match of $1 million. These positions were requested to assist with NCFAST system issues, Medicaid eligibility, the Affordable Care Act, and to eliminate some of the mandatory overtime that they have had in place for 18-plus months. As I mentioned earlier, sustainability is a concern, and we do have uncertainties in the sales tax, the revaluation in 2017, and federal budget issues which include troop strength in our community. At this time, these 65 positions are not recommended due to sustainability concerns. As you may recall, in this fiscal year, we approved 17 new child protective services positions based on a state review of our caseload data and additionally additional state funding provided. Also, over 18 months ago, the board approved some funding to assist the Department of Social Services with some of these difficult state software issues. Funding was put in place for 42 time-limited slots and three temporary positions. Over the course of the 18 months, the average number of slots filled has been about 25 out of the total 45. Forty-five of the 65 positions requested were requested to replace these time-limited slots. The remaining positions would augment other areas such as Medicaid, adult protective services, and other divisions within DSS such as their financial area, their information technology, and also administration. Although we've not included funding for the 65 new positions, we do recommend funding, we did recommend funding, for the next 12 months for the 25 time-limited slots. To fully assess this request, I recommend a multi-step process over the next 12 months, and I'd like to share that with you now. First of all, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has been called in to conduct a review in other counties, and most recently, in Wake County. And those counties requested DHHS to come in and provide caseload data, average processing times, and also provide a recommendation on the appropriate staffing levels, and I believe we should do this as well. Also, the Director of Social Services has been creative in including alternate shifts such as 12 to 9 shifts when there's not as many other counties on the system. I would ask that we continue to evaluate alternative strategies other than adding new staff. Additionally, I think we need to analyze the business processes to determine if there are any operational efficiencies that can be achieved that may reduce the processing times and also in any number of requested new positions. If new positions are approved, I recommend that we phase in the new positions over time as we phase out the time-limited slots. Results of this multi-step process will be reported to the Finance Committee. I would like to add that I've had a very detailed conversation this afternoon with our director, Ms. Jackson, who's in the audience this evening, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate her positive response to this recommendation. Obviously, she's disappointed in the positions not being approved, but she has committed her her support to working with us in this multi-step process, and we both have the same interest. We want to find a long-term solution to some of the issues that she's facing with her staffing needs. So, again, thank you to Ms. Jackson. Other considerations. So far, all of our discussion has been centered around the general fund. I'd like to talk for just a moment about the solid waste enterprise fund. This year, the recommended budget includes 8 million dollars to construct sales nine and 10. In addition, 4.6 million dollars is set aside to partially close some of our earlier sales, sales one, two, three, and four. And finally, I recommend that we, over the next 12 months, begin to review our 48-dollar landfill fee. This fee was established in the early 90s. The operating costs continue to increase, and it's my belief that we cannot continue to sustain landfill operations on a fee that was established over 20 years ago. At this point, I'd like to take you back to the conclusion in last year's recommended presentation, and here's what I said last year. Our philosophy moving forward should be to define our core functions, to develop a more efficient organization, and to emphasize technology as a way to enhance customer service, and I still believe that today. Last June, we challenged our department heads to review their operations and develop solutions to streamline services and create efficiencies, and really, the bottom line is to save money. Many departments have made progress in this area, but day-to-day operations and their responsibilities limit their ability to commit the time and the resources necessary. To some extent, I defined the philosophy and the direction, but I didn't provide the tools or the means to achieve this goal. And this year, I think we have the tools, and this is the initiative that I'm very excited about, and I hope you will be as well. And this new business, this new initiative or path is business intelligence. This is not a term that I created, and it's not a new term. Business intelligence is this. It's a set of tools and techniques to identify, develop, and create new business opportunities. Basically, business intelligence can do this for us. It can maximize our existing resources to address our gaps in customer service, to respond to increased customer demand without our customary default of adding new positions. Business intelligence will provide objective information about our business processes to help us work smarter. Just to give you a little bit of feedback, too, there is a training curriculum and a certification program for business intelligence. We have several members of our county information staff that are certified in business intelligence. Here's what I'd like to recommend this evening. I'd like to recommend that we expand the Enterprise Solutions Division. That's a division that I talked about a little bit early in the presentation. It's a division that was created by Mr. Todd this year within his existing budget. And remember, they were created to review and document and analyze the business processes around our new software. I recommend adding two new business analyst positions to this division. Mr. Todd didn't request this. He intended to go there in the long term, and I'm just gently pushing him in that direction a little sooner than he anticipated. I believe through business intelligence, we can expand our focus beyond technology by reviewing all county business processes. And here's what I believe the result's going to be. We can expect solutions beyond technology that provide efficiency. Success, though, is going to require a commitment and a buy-in from the Board of Commissioners and all county departments. The Enterprise Solutions Division will work collaboratively with all departments to make recommendations to streamline our processes, to create efficiencies, and enhance customer service. And I believe this will create an internal partnership based on business intelligence. In addition, we intend on creating an internal review committee, a six-member committee that will be made up of our Information Services Director, an Assistant County Manager, a Director of Internal Audit, and that we're going to select three representatives from county departments to serve on this committee. The recommendations will then flow through the County Board Finance Committee. I think the first priority for the Enterprise Solution Division should be to review the Social Services business processes under food and nutrition and Medicaid, and Ms. Jackson is supportive of this. In addition, the Department of Health and Human Services has also created an operational efficiency team. We talked this afternoon about Keith Todd's group, the Enterprise Solution Division, working collaboratively with the state's operational team. This year's conclusion. All decisions in the recommended budget have been considered based upon financial sustainability and the fact that it's going to continue to pose a challenge because our revenue environment remains constrained, and our demand for service will continue to increase. I believe our path to financial sustainability and consistently providing excellent customer service is through the adoption of business intelligence as our objective approach. As the Enterprise Solution Division works collaboratively with the county departments documenting, reviewing, and analyzing business processes, this internal partnership will naturally be created. Embracing this philosophy as we use business intelligent techniques is really embracing change. We're going to change from the mold of "we've always done it this way," and "we need new We have the philosophy, and we have the direction to streamline the organization and become more efficient. I'm just a year late. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the department heads, as many have served as advisors along the way. We met this year with each and every department and some, such as Social Services, probably four times, so I want to express my appreciation for their patience. I'd like to thank the budget team. The budget team has been involved in preparing this budget. The budget team includes our Deputy County Manager and our Assistant County Managers, Tracy Jackson and Melissa Cardinale. It includes our Finance Director, Budget and Accounting Staff, all of our Public Information Staff, and this year, we had to call in reinforcements from almost every staff member and administration. And I want to express my sincere appreciation. This really has been a team effort in bringing this together for this evening. A budget schedule is before you, and the budget is now in your hands. We look forward to answering your questions and to help you in structuring an adopted budget. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Board for giving me this opportunity. And for the citizens that are watching, the budget is available this evening on our county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. With that comprehensive recommended budget, we sincerely appreciate the staff and all the efforts that have gone into this. And I know some of them are here, and I know how much you depend on them to create this. We will be taking this under advisement as we enter our work session Thursday night. Hope everyone will be there on time, and we will be having a little snack, I think. Ms., is that right, Madam Clerk? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Been a motion and a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Unanimous.